Good evening and welcome to tonight's Meadville Tribune Forum for the candidates running for the Pencrest School Board in the election on November 7th. We want to welcome the audience here at Sagertown High School, as well as those listening on Cool 101.7 FM, and those who are watching on Armstrong Cable. I'm Rick Green, the editor of the Meadville Tribune, and with me is Keith Gushard, one of the paper's reporters. Before we start, I would like to ask everyone here, please take a moment to turn off any cellphone they may have with them, so as not to create a distraction. Thank you. We appreciate the candidates for appearing this evening to be questioned about important issues facing Pencrest School District, its students, parents, and taxpayers in the Cambridge Springs, Sagertown, and Maplewood attendance area. With us this evening are Jerry Dean, Robert Gulick, Mark Giroux, Terrence Dean, Travis Porter, and Robert Johnson Jr., who are seeking one of the four four-year terms on the ballot. Also with us are Timothy Brown, Stacy Porter, and Jeffrey Brooks, who are seeking one of the two two-year terms on the ballot. We will now allow each candidate up to two minutes for an introduction of themselves, and then we will begin questioning the candidates. Because of the large number of candidates on the ballot and at tonight's forum, each candidate will have up to one and a half minutes to answer the question. We have drawn lots to see who goes first with the introduction, and we will begin the questioning with that same person, and then alternate. So we'll begin right now with the introductions. Mr. Brown, you have up to two minutes, or, yeah, up to two minutes for the open.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. My name is Timothy Brown, and thank you to the Tribune and the other people involved for putting this on, and to everybody attending. I've been a resident of Crawford County my whole life. I went to Pencrest, I graduated from Pencrest, my children all graduated from Pencrest. My wife is also a teacher at Pencrest School District, so the school district has a lot of meaning to me. Part of wanting to be on the school board, as I am currently on the school board, and the brief time that I've been on, I have learned a great deal. And what, the school has great potential, we have great staff, we have great administrators, we just need to keep working to get our curriculum up to date, get our, we're on the right track to get everything up to date. We're getting a lot of positive feedback, so being part of this area my entire life, it means a lot to me to see the school district come back to what it was when I graduated back in the eighties. It's very important to me. So, I guess I could go to that egg salad recipe now. That's all I have, really.
Mr. Porter? Travis Porter?
My name's Travis Porter, I'd also like to welcome everybody that came out this evening. Good to see you all. I also grew up here my whole entire life. I went to this very school, graduated at this very school here at Sagertown. I am married, have a thirteen-year-old and eleven-year-old that both go to Cambridge Springs. I've been on the school board currently for about a year, I was appointed a year ago. I also have seen drastic changes in this school district over, since I was in school twenty-five years ago. Obviously, our numbers have shrank drastically. I graduated around one-ten, most of the classes back then had that, now we're down to sixty-five, seventy, maybe seventy-five. So as a district, we have to, we have to adapt and make changes, because that's what's happened, is this district has changed, but we haven't really adapted, so it's time that we got together now and figure out what we need to do to make that drastic shrink in size, and what the, what adjustments need to be, because I don't think that we made the adjustments when we should've, and now it's, it's a little late, and now we have, now we have to push to make those adjustments. That's all, thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Terrence Dean.
Hi, my name's Terry Dean. I've lived here in Crawford County for thirty-five years. I am the outsider. I grew up in northern Maine. I went to College of Nova Scotia, and I taught and coached over there, and met my wife, who's down to my left, and we moved back to her hometown of Meadville in nineteen eighty-two. I was hired at Pencrest in nineteen eighty-three as a high school science teacher and a basketball coach. I've been in the area a long time, and I was very pleased that I was able to teach all those years at Cambridge Springs High School, as well as three years at Maplewood, but I have a feeling I have some insight into what is needed in education, and where there might be some things that can be made to work better, and more efficiently, and less expensively, maybe, I hope. I'm hoping that all of you are out there and voting, and make your voices heard, so that the people that you do elect can do their job to the best of their ability. Thank you.
Next up is Bob Johnston. Mr. Johnston, whenever you're ready.
My name is Bob Johnston. I'm kinda like Terry, I wasn't born and raised here, but I came back here in nineteen seventy-five, married a Sagertown High School graduate. We've been married almost forty-two years. We started our family down towards Cochrane. I brought my kids up to French Creek Valley Christian School, and for eight years I served on the board there. We had some financial difficulties, like we're having here, they're not of greater magnitude at the Christian School, because it's not as big a budget, but when I was on the board, we were able to work through them issues and make the school solvent again. Neighbors have been asking me to come to the board, they want representation for the students and taxpayers, and that's what we hope to gain with this position, like to be a financial watchdog for the taxpayers and the students.
All right, thank you. Next up is Jeff Brooks. Mr. Brooks, when you're ready.
My name's Jeff Brooks. I went to Maplewood and grew up in Lebanon on a farm. I was in the Navy for four years, went over to Persian Gulf on a minesweeper. Following that, worked a variety of jobs. I was, worked on a golf course, and worked at a bronze foundry here in Sagertown. Was lucky enough to get laid off from that position, had a chance to go back to school where I got a degree in secondary education. The only time I spent in classrooms here was doing student teaching, where I got to see what happens in a classroom, and see what teachers have to do on a daily basis. Since then, I've been working social services, I've worked in mental health for several years. Currently, I'm the preferred communities manager up in Erie. Lori and I have three children, one has just graduated from Sagertown, two are still in the Sagertown program. I got involved in the school board about a year and a half ago, when we were considering closing libraries. The first time I spoke at a budget meeting, I spoke about the community, and what Pencrest used to be, and what Maplewood used to be, and Sagertown and Cambridge, and how we were the envy of every other school, and how as a community, we need to build ourselves back up to that, and that our students deserve that. I spoke at a budget meeting, trying to talk about our band, talk about the opportunities we're taking away from our students, and I've been involved ever since. I helped with some other people, I was part of the beginning of the Pencrest Parent Committee, which is a committee to help open up communication between parents and the school board, because I think one of the big things that we need to work on is our communication. As we move forward, I think one of the biggest things that we need to look at is we're at a crossroads in our district, and we really need to make sure going forward, we're making the intelligent decisions based on not just what's good financially, but also what's good for the students, and make sure that we're giving our students the best chance going forward.
Well, I'm sorry, we're gonna have to cut you off at that, at that point. Next up is Stacy Porter. Ms. Porter?
Hi, my name is Stacy Porter, and I did not grow up around here either. I moved here about twenty-five years ago, right after I graduated high school. I came from a suburb from Buffalo, I didn't live in the city, but I now have a good understanding of big city and small town. And one of the reasons why I chose to stay here is because I really enjoyed this community. And I've lived in Pencrest since I've, since I moved here, and I've never gone out. I have two, I have four kids total, two are raised and grown up, one is actually in the Navy, he's deployed right now, and then we have two kids at home, so I have a good understanding of all the way through high school, and then I'm doing it all over again. I can see the changes just in from when my oldest son graduated in two thousand thirteen, all the way through what's going on now, and it's, there's a big difference. I have a very big heart for my community, and we, I serve on the baseball board in Cambridge as well, and so I'm just, I have a big heart for the children, and I have a big heart for our taxpayers, our young ones, our elderly ones, the whole way around. I have a business degree, I currently am the store manager of two tax, or two tax offices in Meadville, and I also have my insurance license, and I'm active agent. I think that's about all I have.
All right, thank you very much. Next up is Jerry Dean.
Good evening, thanks for coming. I'm Jerry Dean. I am a direct descendant of David Mead, who founded Meadville, so I definitely have roots in the community. I was raised by my parents to give back to the community, and I feel that I have done that. I have served on the board of Sagertown Borough, I was the president for two years, I have thirty-eight years of education experience, K through twelve, Portland, Maine, Bethlehem, Pennsylvania, Conyote School District, and my final twelve years were here in Pencrest, in fact, in this building at Sagertown. From all the experiences that I have had, and for the four years I have been on the board, the biggest agenda item for me is making sure that our students are prepared for the twenty-first century. It is a global economy, it is a global world that they're going into, which is something that we did not have growing up. We didn't have computers. When we got a colored TV, it was a big thing. So today, with the kids having phones, the communications, the jobs that are going to be developed for them, we have to have them prepared for it. So students are my number-one agenda, if I have to have an agenda, and the other one is the finances. We need to be able to make sure that our children are prepared for the century that they're going to live in, but we need to keep an eye on the money. The state doesn't help a whole lot, they passed a budget, but we haven't seen any of the money. So balancing that, the mandated unfunded positions that we have to do, the programs we have to offer for every single child is different. Cyber school kills the school district, it's very expensive for cyber school. So finances is a big concern, and I hope you all get out and vote. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up is Robert Gulick. Mr. Gulick?
Hello, my name is Robert Gulick. First of all, I'd like to thank the Meadville Tribune for putting on this forum. I'd also like to thank Armstrong Cable and Cool 101.7 for being here and covering it. It just occurred to me, this is the first time I've ever performed on a stage, so I can go home and cross that off my bucket list when I get home. I grew up, I'm a lifelong resident of Crawford County, graduated from Meadville High School in nineteen seventy-one, raised three grown children, and they're scattered around the country. I think I'm uniquely qualified to be on the school board because of my background. First twenty-five years of my working life, I worked retail sales and management, very familiar with customer service, budgets, you know, that sort of thing. Then eventually, I went back to school for two years and got my teaching degree at the age of forty-four, and I worked seventeen years for Pencrest as an elementary teacher at Casalago and Sagertown Elementary. The reason I'm running for school board is I retired a year ago, and I had been searching for something meaningful to do, something I could do and give back, and hopefully feel like I'm helping, helping mold the future, now that I'm not teaching anymore. And that's precisely why I want to be on the school board. I want to be on a school board that's a team, united for the same purposes, and that would be, the only purpose would be to educate our Pencrest children as best we can. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Giroux?
Hi, my name's Mark Giroux. I want to thank everybody for coming. Just a little bit about myself, I was born in the area, graduated from Cambridge Springs High School, my wife graduated from Cambridge Springs High School, went to college, got an accounting degree. We have three, three kids, and when the oldest was in kindergarten, I had an opportunity, or well, I had the chance to move to Pittsburgh to, to work, and we decided that, nothing against Pittsburgh, we didn't want to raise our kids in Pittsburgh, and so we moved back here. And my two oldest kids have graduated from Cambridge, and the youngest one's a sophomore at Cambridge. I've been involved in everything that you can imagine in the community. I've been on boards, and Cub Scouts, and Boy Scouts, and I've been involved in the baseball, and Booster Clubs, and everything you can imagine. And, I mean, my focus is taking care of the kids and getting them what they need. And it's a little frustrating, I hear the same thing everybody else does, that, well, I remember when Pencrest, I remember when Sagertown, I remember when, I remember when. It's a little frustrating that we have taken a few steps back from the glory days, I guess you will, and I think we need to work to get back to where we were and where we can be. And that's, that's really all I got. I saw the red card, so I'll end it there.
Remind folks that, again, with the amount of candidates, we're gonna do a minute and a half on the answers, which is a pretty long, long time, staying focused, so that's our suggestion to you. We will go down the line, and then we'll start the first question with Mr. Brown, and the second question, we'll start with Mr. Porter. We'll work our way back. This first question, Mr. Brown, for you. Over the past fifteen years or so, Pencrest gradually has been raising taxes while the county's been losing population over that same period. County's population estimate now, by the U.S. Census Bureau, is just over eighty-six thousand. That's down about two-point-eight percent from the two thousand ten census, when it was about eighty-eight-seven, and it's down, at the turn of the century, it was around ninety thousand three hundred, so it's down about four-and-a-half percent. Meanwhile, Pencrest has seen its unassigned fund balance, or the money that's left over, drop from more than six million several years ago, it's down to one, about one-point-four million. That was as the end of the fiscal two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen year. It's a long-winded way to ask you, what can Pencrest do to combat this situation, to help out the taxpayers?
Well, the first thing is, our byproduct is the students that walk across this stage and graduate. To get those students to that position in life, they have to be taught by our teachers. Our teachers' need materials do that. It's just a continual cycle, but as the population drops, the money drops. But what the state asks us to do does not drop. What the state takes away from us doesn't come back. So we're continually looking for funds to maintain the education that our children deserve. The population has dropped in this area, and it's gonna continue to drop until our local government does something to get jobs back into this area, to bring people back into this community. As it stands now, what do we have going on? I mean, the jobs are leaving this area. That's the biggest thing that's hurting us. But, on the same note, if we get our school back, back to, getting back to where we were, people will start bringing their kids back to this community with a smaller school system. That will help lessen the burden tremendously.
Thank you. Mr. Porter?
I think that we've kind of somewhat done things backwards in the wrong way from what we should be doing. Raising taxes is certainly not the way to raise revenue. How you raise revenue is you get people to come back here again, and you don't do, you don't do that by raising taxes, you don't get businesses to come in by raising taxes, you don't get people to build homes by raising taxes. And if I'm looking to move somewhere, I'm certainly not looking to move somewhere where we keep raising taxes. If we increase people coming back to this community that are building homes, or they're building businesses, that, that we get more people in this community, when we get our enrollment back up to that one-ten, or that one-twenty a class, instead of sixty-five or seventy, our income will come up. We have things we can't control, the pension plan has destroyed every school district in this state, and that's why we're mostly in financial trouble. But, and we did not adjust here when we should've, and now we're, now we're scrambling to adjust. But we need to get people to come back here, that's how you get more money. Raising taxes chases people away.
Thank you. Next up, Mr. Dean?
Very good points made so far. We do need more people in our communities. We need to be very efficient at spending the money that we do have, and to make sure that we aren't wasting it on reliving new programs that have a different name from what it was when I arrived here thirty-five years ago. I've seen, over those years, programs that have happened that had name X, and then fifteen years later, we're paying again to do these programs that have name Y, and there are only certain, so many ways that you can teach, and kids learn, and to have to put new names on the same programs in different directions, and pay for it again, I think that's a waste of money. Other than that, you know, you can't get blood from a rock, you have to have people in the community with jobs, and until that happens, we're gonna be in the same boat. We've gotta find ways to efficiently use our funds that we have, and until they change the way that funds are provided, and the regulations by the state, we're kinda stuck where we are.
Mr. Johnston?
Taxes are a necessary evil, but I think that should be a last resort. I agree with Mr. Dean, I think we need to be wise stewards of the money that we are getting, and not doing wasteful things. Case in point was the appeal that was just filed. Mr. DeFrancesco had a suit to be able to see the bills, and the school board, or the district, informed that was allowing them to see the bills, but yet they decided to use taxpayer money to try and do that. And again, reiterating what everybody else said, we need to make this community more livable for people. A lot of my neighbors are elderly people on a fixed income, and they can't afford to keep raising taxes, they gotta make decisions between medication, or can I keep my home, or do I have to move someplace where it's cheaper? We've got to make this school district more appealable to the people, and bring jobs back to our community.
Thank you. Next up, Mr. Brooks?
As you said, our population is dropping, and so are our reserves. We have, over the last seven years, spent about five-point-five million dollars, and didn't really have a plan of what we're gonna do, and that money ran out, and that's what put us in the position we're in right now. We're seeing good people leave, going to other schools, because the product we're putting out in Pencrest is not what people want. Right now, Pencrest has the lowest property taxes of anyone in Crawford County, and we have the highest income of anyone in Crawford County. I'm not saying we need to raise our taxes up to be the highest in Crawford County, but some realistic planning by the board will prevent us from being in a situation where we have to make knee-jerk decisions based on what we can get by on, rather than what we need to do to attract and keep the kind of people that we want here in Pencrest. The people that are leaving are the people that we want here, the people would be the leaders, people would be in the boosters, people would be involved in the PTO. They're leaving because Pencrest is just simply not providing enough. We do need to keep an eye on our nickels and dimes, we need to see what we're doing, but in the end, we've cut down to the point where we're driving people away and not attracting them, and that is one of the biggest things I see in Pencrest.
Thank you. Ms. Porter?
I believe that, when I look at this, I look at it like, like a business, in the sense that if your business is failing, you kinda need to take some time and do, look forensically and see why that is happening. Where are the leaks? Where are things, where can we cut, where can we not cut? Schools would not exist without children, that's why we're here. We're here to give children an education. Right, the population is down, cyber school is a big deal right now, and that's one of the leaks, and I think that we need to find out why they're going, and somehow, whether we find a way to bring them back, or find a way to meet them where they are. I don't know what all of the answers are, but I would, I would view it more in a business sense, that if my business is failing, I'm gonna roll my sleeves up, and I'm gonna find out why, because children are future adults. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Ms. Dean?
Finances, no matter where you go, finances are gonna be an issue. Our student population is dropping, people aren't having four and five children anymore, they can't afford it. The majority of them may have three children, but they're gonna stop at three. Both family members are usually working, businesses themselves are leaving Pennsylvania, it's not just Northwest Pennsylvania, but businesses are leaving across the Commonwealth. What we need to do is, we need to promote what is being done that is great in Pencrest. We need to support our teachers, we need to get out there and scream, holler, yell, support our teachers, support our kids. That's why we're on this board, at least that's what you're supposed to be here for, is to support the kids, support the teachers who are teaching the kids, and that's what we need to do. We need to find ways to get parents involved in a positive way, including the senior citizens. Thank you.
That was your thirty-second.
I stopped.
Mr. Gulick?
Well, the first thing I would say is, the raising of taxes is kind of a recent phenomenon. There were a number of years there where Pencrest did not raise taxes. As the population drops, the tax base drops, and you get less money. And so, in order to get the same amount of money you had before, you tax those people and get more money. It's a vicious cycle, and it's not one that I want to continue. I definitely do not. That is, the last resort is raising taxes. I would suggest, school board is not political, but I'm gonna make it so for a couple minutes, because, well, not a couple minutes, a couple seconds, because we have local representatives, we have state representatives, we have federal representatives, who are anti-public education. It's a war on public education. And if you want public education to continue, or be as it was, you have to, you have to go out and vote, you have to vote people in that are pro-public education, and that's not happening. I guess the last thing I would say is that, as I said, I wanna, I wanna get on the team, I know we're gonna have to do more with less. As a teacher, I saw some wasteful spending. We're buying things from vendors that we could buy other places much cheaper, much less expensive, I saw that. And it's something we can look into, as well as many other things. But again, we're gonna have to do more with less, and a tax raise is a last resort, but if needed, to keep the kids at the same level of education without shortchanging them, that's what we'll do.
We'll have to stop you, stop you there. Mr. Giroux?
Thank you.
I actually kinda forgot the question, I've been listening to everything everybody said, but Pencrest, really, Pencrest is no different than any other school district in Northwest Pennsylvania, in the state. Everybody's, the majority of people, districts, their populations are going down, their revenue's going down, and we, like everybody said, that is one of the biggest things, we need to figure out how we can bring people to the area. And to piggyback on something somebody said, I don't know the statistics for, you had said sixteen years, I think is what you said. As far as cyber school goes, since I've been on the board for four and a half years, every year, we have spent in excess of a million dollars on cyber school, okay? If I had to guess, I would say we've probably spent close to six-and-a-half million dollars since I've been on the board, paying for cyber school. If we could cut that in half, that's three, three-and-a-half million dollars that we would have back. We are in the process of trying to develop our own cyber school. My opinion, we're not gonna get the kids back that are there, but we can stop them and keep them, instead of having them go to cyber school. But I don't think we're gonna get them back. They left for a reason, we're not gonna get them back, but we can maybe stop the bleeding, so to say.
All right, we'll have to stop you there. Thank you very much. Our next question, Rick Woolfield, and we'll start, Mr. Porter, please.
Okay, back down at the other end of the stage here. How will you, as a Pencrest School Board member, do a better job in evaluating both current and future financial needs of the district?
We obviously need to look at our revenue coming in, and our revenue going back out. One thing I don't think that the board has, has done in the past, and I don't think we're doing a great job at it now, is we need to, we need to watch every penny, more than what we are, we've never really watched every penny. We look at big numbers and big dollars, but we don't really, we as a board are probably gonna have to spend more time and get together more to break down the budget and the numbers, and have a better- together more to break down the budget and the numbers and have a better feel and a better grasp for what those actually are, because I think sometimes we make decisions on things that we don't necessarily have all the answers for. So I think we're going to have to spend a lot more time. As a board, it's tough to get together all the time. Everybody has jobs, everybody has families, but there's probably going to be times where we're going to have to, to break down those numbers more and see what we need to do as far as, you know, how we can increase our revenue and watching our expenditures going back out.
Thank you. Mr. Dean?
That's difficult for someone who's never been on the board to see the process that goes on. I know there are work sessions that aren't for public, and then there are public sessions to find out what happened Monday before. Until I have a grasp, better grasp of how things are looked at and how programs are decided upon, it's difficult to say how I would want to cut things or change things or promote things. But from the monies that we have, we have to efficiently use them in programs that are reasonable, that are effective, and that are going to have an end result that is positive. I'm guessing after, if I have the opportunity to be there and I can learn how the process really goes on, I would have a better chance of answering more detailed than I have already.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson?
I'm going to waste a minute or a little bit of my time. When you ask the question, I'm going to ask you to speak up because my hearing ain't as good as everybody else.
Sure, we apologize.
Okay, I understand from what they're saying. This budget is just a bigger one than your own personal one at home. You've got so many dollars at home to work with, and when you run out of them dollars, there's things that you've got to do away with. And you've got to watch where you're spending them dollars. You know, the goal here is to make education better for the kids. We've got to find things that are going to entice people to bring their kids here. We've got to provide them the education that they're looking for. I think that's why we're losing a lot of students on a yearly basis. People are pulling out, going to the cyber school to get what they're looking for that we're not providing. And I think we need to sit down and look at our dollars wisely and choose programs that are going to benefit the students and the overall picture.
Good. Thank you. Mr. Brooks?
As far as our current financial situation, I think Penn Crest has had an interesting financial history over the last couple of years as far as what numbers we have, what numbers we trust, what numbers are out there. One of the things that I do is, you know, make sure you attend all the work sessions, make sure that you're there to know what's going on, and make those work sessions a little more extensive. If you'd have a question, all the invoices are available, except for the one under current litigation. Go over them. Sit down with the board so that you know what you're voting for on Thursday. I think that's very important. We need to plan intelligently for what's going on. We need to start getting input is what we're going to do. From what I understand, within the next, you know, five to 10 years, we're going to have to make some serious decisions about how Penn Crest wants to look going forward. And we should not wait till five to 10 years to make those decisions. We need to decide which way we're going to go and be committed to that. There's no decision, there's no decision that's all upside, and there's no decision that's all downside. Every decision is a mixture of both. As a community, we need to make a plan and move forward together as a community. That's the school board, that's the teachers, that's the parents, that's the students, that's the bus drivers. Everyone needs to be going forward in the same direction. We can't just be saying, you know, don't trust the numbers here, or saying, saying different things. We need to be on the same page so that we can reach our goals together.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Porter?
I would like to approach it like, again, I apologize for the business-related vocabulary, but I would approach it more like a profit and loss. Where are we doing well? Where are we hitting our budget numbers? Where are we, where could we give and take? Where could we, without actually being in those work sessions, I don't have better answers. But I do believe that there are some things that we can do that are worth looking into, like the cyber. What can we do to resolve that issue? Because that is definitely a pain point. So what can we do to resolve some of those? And obviously, we have other pain points. And I, I believe that the board that is elected, whatever happens after Election Day, we all need to have that common goal and that heart to sit down. We owe it to our children. We owe it to the taxpayers, young and old, to sit down and roll our sleeves up and find out what is the real problem, because I'm sure we can come up with something.
Thank you. Ms. Dean?
Budget process is a unified project. It involves everybody in the district, it involves the board, it involves everybody. You all have to, we all have to attend all the budget meetings. We need to listen to the teachers. What do they need to move their classes forward so that the students are getting the best they can and that they have the materials to do that? We need to do those things. We need to listen to the taxpayers. The taxpayers need to come in with ideas. We tried that last year. Collectively as a board, this board needs to work together. It hasn't done that in four years that I've been on this board. The board needs to work together. We need to have a common goal, not have separate agendas. That would be a huge step in the right direction. Cyber school kills us. We are looking at starting a cyber school, and I hope we continue to go down that road. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gruick?
Probably be brief on this one. I agree with Mr. Dean. If I'm fortunate enough to be elected four years from now, hopefully I can answer that question. However, I don't know what I don't know. I'm not on the board. The only thing I can tell you is that there has to be things that you can look at to trend outward, such as reports, demographic reports, population reports, those kind of things. You can probably glean some information from other school boards. You know, if they're doing something right, you know, let's try it or discuss it. Other than that, I look forward to finding out the answer to that question, honestly.
All right, thank you. Mr. Drew?
Well, there's a couple of things. In order to evaluate our needs, we need a plan. We need a strategic plan. We have worked on one for technology. We are currently working on one for curriculum. We need a complete five-year, a 10-year plan. We need input from the taxpayers, the teachers, the local businesses. We need input from everybody to come up with a plan, where we want to go and how we're going to get there, and we need to stick to it. We need to review it every year or every six months, whatever it takes, but we need to have a plan, because right now, we don't. We have no strategic plan. We don't have any vision of where we want to get to as a district. That, so we're just, we're just going. And we need a vision. We need to know where we want to take our students and how exactly we're going to get there.
Okay, thank you. And we'll come back here and conclude this question with Mr. Brown.
See what you mean about forgetting. Everybody's had some pretty good points. The fact of micromanaging every penny of the budget is going to be almost impossible to do, time-wise and just the man-hours that would take itself. What we have to do is like, I'm going to reiterate what Mark said, we have to come up with a plan. We have started doing that. We have seen positive things happen. But until we get the support from our community, from fellow board, well, the board is all on one team, the community comes together, comes to the meetings, offers opinions, offers ideas, not criticism. We don't need to be judged and past sins and all that. We cannot change the past. This is what we have to work with, what the state gives us, what the federal government gives us, and what our local taxpayers give us. We have to educate the children. We have bricks and mortars to pay for. We have lights to pay for, school buses. Everything keeps coming in and it gets bigger. Our budget, the revenue doesn't. It's simple math. Stop right there.
All right, thank you. The next question will go to Mr. Dean. How do you propose to balance the educational needs of the students with the fiscal responsibility of the taxpayer?
That's a fun one. That's a, that's a, that's a fun one. How do you, you know, without having been there, that's difficult to say. I hope that we are going to provide more than a basic education to our children. We need to provide educations to help them be exposed to things that are going to be their futures. When I, you know, one of the reasons I kind of got out of education at the end was the technological things and advances passed me by, and my ability to absorb those new things, I didn't and couldn't and wasn't really interested in. We have to make sure that, from whatever monies we have, and that we are providing the best education, directing the kids toward what the future's going to be like than, than what I was able to do as a teacher back then. Come up with financial answers, I can't do that. I say, I haven't been on the board. I don't know all the ins and outs of how much money we have compared to what we're told we have to spend and what programs we have to do and where all that stuff goes to. Until I know that, I can't really intelligently answer those things.
Okay, the question we have from Mr. Johnston. How do you propose to balance the educational needs of the students with the fiscal responsibility to the taxpayers?
The key thing is the students. We have to prepare our students for what's in the workaday world. This community here used to be a farming community. There's hardly any of the farms, everything, the tool and die industry's shrinking. We've got to find a niche here for our kids so our kids aren't moving away. I see a lot of the kids graduating from here, and there's nothing here for them. We've lost a lot of our jobs here. And I personally believe that the taxes is what's driving them away. We have to start using the dollars that we have to try and prepare these kids for what's available here in our community so they're not leaving and going to other areas.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Brooks?
The Pennsylvania Constitution says that the state is tasked with providing a thorough and efficient education, and that's what the school board should be doing. When we look at money as a cost versus being an investment, I think that's one of the biggest things that we can do, because if we start investing in our education, we invest in what the kids are doing, when they get out of school, they're going to be the taxpayers then, and they're going to be in better position than we are moving forward. Like Bob says, people are leaving. We're not, the area's not going to regrow because people are getting out. It used to be you'd get out of school and you would go get a job. You'd work at, you'd work at a plant, you'd work at a factory. We need people that are going to innovate, people are going to create jobs when they get done with school. They're going to go away and come back and use Penn Crest as a place to start launching things and creating more jobs, hoping that someone's going to come in and save us. It's not going to work. We need to create the people in Penn Crest that are going to save Penn Crest. We talk about balancing the needs of the students and the taxpayers. I think I'm leading in red cards tonight, Jen. I'm leading the most reviews. Something I'd suggested before and something I think we do is get more people involved. There's senior tax credits for property taxes. Get the kids to help fill out those things. Have budgeting classes here where the kids and the community can get together and work on things together, so that the people are more invested and know what's going on in the school, so that, you know, it's not us versus them, it's us together.
We're going to have to stop you there, Porter. Thank you. Ms. Porter?
I believe that there, it's possible to have creative ways to do that. Our world in itself, even the United States, or most of the United States, we're really changing global, or we're really changing in technology, and it's just growing exponentially. And I think there's possibly ways to look, again, I don't have those figures because I'm not in those private meetings, but I think there's ways that maybe we can go where those children are going in the cyber schools and offer the things that would make them. Maybe we can create our own, or these are just ideas, but offer those AP classes, offer the things that, that people are really looking for. We have students that live in Penn Crest and switch to General McLean. They're doing it. They found something over there that, that they want. Why can't we do that? What are those things? What are those pain points? I think there's a lot, too much to answer in a minute and a half, but that's what, I really feel that way. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Dean?
It's hard to balance the needs of the students and the fiscal budget, so we need to pull as many people in to get as much input as we possibly can. If we create a cyber school, we stop the leak, that would help tremendously. That money that we would save, we would be able to reuse and dedicate in our buildings. I agree with Mark, we need, we need a five-year, a 10-year plan. We need a strategic plan. We both have said that for the four years we've been on the board. It's fallen on deaf ears. So hopefully, if we're given the opportunity for another four years, that that will come to fruition. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Gruick?
Could you repeat the question, please, Mr. Green?
How do you propose to balance the educational needs of the students with the fiscal responsibility to the taxpayer?
Okay, to me, that sounds like a rewording of a previous question. I'll give it a shot. Again, we have to do more with less. We have to be creative. And the only way to be creative and do more with less is to be a team and look forward. Several people have discussed a strategic plan. That's absolutely necessary. We have to do that. We have to look ahead. Community involvement, I think Mr. Brooks mentioned that. I was on the PTCO board, Segregatan Elementary, for several years, and it's honestly terrible. A school of 500 kids and you have like four parents doing everything. Nobody wants to get involved. And I know people are busy. I know it's not like it used to be. But if we're, if we're a board working as a team and looking ahead and, you know, brainstorming ideas, I think we can make it happen, and I think we can make this district much better in that regard.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Drew?
Okay. It can be done. It's been done before. There, there's not necessarily one right answer for that. I think technology is part of it. Someone had mentioned AP classes. We can, we can use technology to offer AP classes to all three schools with one teacher. I mean, we have that technology. We need to start utilizing it. We need to, part of a plan, we need to figure out where we want to get to. I read an article, some crazy number that jobs that kids in kindergarten will have, there's some crazy percent, they haven't even been created yet, okay? So we don't even know what 18 years down the road is going to be, but we need to have a vision, a strategic plan. We need to keep reevaluating where we're headed so that we can provide the best for the students with what we have. It can be done. We've done it before. Other districts, General McLean does it. All the area districts do it. So can we.
Thank you. Mr. Brown?
Offer an education that is not standard. We have to be above standard on everything. If we're above standard, we're better than our, I'll say, competitors. That will help bring more students back into this school. As Mark said, we can balance, we can do this. And we've already been coming up with some creative ideas to make improvements in this school district. Unfortunately, anything we do today, we may not see a benefit for three, five, six years down the road. We will not see instant benefits. Our budget is better than it has been. It's, it is improving. Again, this is a slow process. Things take time. But if we stick with where we're going now with technology, technology moved in great leaps this year. The curriculum has moved in great leaps. We keep on this ride, keep pushing, pushing our staff, pushing ourselves to make ourselves better. Then, once the people start coming back, once the students start coming back, stop cyber school. That will help us tremendously with the budget.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Porter?
I agree with Mark and Tim on, on the technology part. And Mark kind of stole a little of my thunder there, actually. I believe, I think the number is about 60% of our students are on free or reduced lunches. And then when you're not, and then when you're asking to ta- And then when you're not, and then when you're asking the taxpayers to pay more to try to help out with that education, those are the same people that kids at 60% are on free reduced lunches, so you're really not, you're, you're not really helping that situation. I think, I'm not a big fan of us starting our own charter school. I don't know what teacher in this district would want us to do that. You're kind of, you're kind of cutting your own throat. But I do think we need to use our technology to help out with our funds because we can do that. We have the ability to do that now. We've spent the money, so we can do that. Our AP classes, we've been working on, we're getting better, but they have a long ways to go because I'm not sure we're preparing our kids for college the way that we should be. And having those online classes where maybe we have a teacher teaching everyone in this district, you know, a chemistry class or whatever it may be, probably is what we need to be looking into. I don't know how else we're going to do that, but...
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Johnston, we'll start with you with this question. The current Penn Crest Board has been embroiled in a very public battle over a possible violation of the Sunshine Act. And that's with regard to payment of invoices from the school board's attorney. One board member even took the board to court over this matter and that's been appealed by the current board and it really wasn't a public vote or a public discussion by the board about this. And there's also been board meetings and work sessions that are typically, typically preceded by an executive session. Sunshine Act requires that there's an explanation and often, an explanation is, isn't given. Do you agree with the current procedures of the school board and why or why not?
I do not. I had 25 years of law enforcement. We have laws in our country for just such purposes and I believe we have to have transparency when we're spending the taxpayers' money. The board has a fiduciary responsibility to know what they're spending that money for and I see a lack of transparency here. It should have never had to come to a lawsuit to be able to view them, invoices. I mean, we don't just stroke a check and pay our bill without opening it and looking to see what it is. And I believe that this board needs to work together and be as transparent as possible to taxpayers. This, this was clearly a violation of the law and it's wrong. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Mr. Brooks.
I'll say that, that I don't know if it's a violation of the law. We don't know what happened, we don't know what was said and I think that's a problem, you know, to, to make accusations. There was a, a letter to the editor where someone made just wild accusations about something with no proof, you know. A functioning board doesn't operate through the courts. A functioning board can operate by communication, transparency, having a direction and following it. The, however many tens of thousands of dollars we've spent on this lawsuit could be avoided if we had a board that talked together and worked this out. You can pay the bill without seeing any, with, with there being some sort of redaction to it. There's some sort of compromise that a functioning board could do. And if the board works towards being functioning rather than working towards calling out somebody or getting your name in the paper, trying to draw attention to yourself, whatever it is that this lawsuit's about, it's ridiculous and it should never have happened. The things I can't speak about that I know about are, going forward, the board needs to address this. We, we, every bill except for one, the board has complete and total access to. This one bill was voted on, whatever happened, happened to it, I can't speak exactly, but there's no reason why we need to drag Penn Crest through the mud in order to, to be able to pay our bills. We can certainly make...
I'm sorry, we're going to have to stop you there. Ms. Porter.
Whether or not we sit here and agree or disagree on whether the lawsuit was valid or should it happen or not happen, we can all agree that a board of, excuse me, a school board is responsible for public money. And how in the world are you going to vote on, on that responsibility if you don't know what you're doing, if you don't know what you're voting for? That's really the long and the short of it, to be really honest. If I personally am responsible to, whether it's balance of budget or decide where, where we need to cut or where we, you know, those things, how to manage those funds, then yeah, I think we should be able to look at what those are. So, that's just how I feel about it.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Dean.
Well, since I was part of the sunshine law, that the allegation that I broke the sunshine law, and that is truly an allegation, I wasn't even in the state when it took place. I'm not happy with the board member who made those allegations about me and really, because it is still a legal issue, I can't address it, but I will say I have never participated nor will I participate in breaking any law in the common law or in the country. Thank you.
Mr. Julie.
Well, first of all, I will say, I'm not a lawyer, I'm not a judge. I don't know enough about the sunshine law to know if it was broken or if it wasn't. I'm sure the courts or somebody will, will figure that out eventually. What I'm disappointed in are board members that, that write things in the paper, allegations about other board members, board members that file lawsuits because of vendettas against other people. Again, my key word tonight is teamwork. This board is not working as a team. And if you look closely, you'll, you'll find out why and you'll find out the reason. Can't go forward this way, that you cannot make progress, backbiting one another, fighting one another. We need, excuse me, we need a board that will work together for the students, for the people of the district. Period.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Gerald.
I don't know how to answer that question. I mean, because like, like, like Mrs. Dean said, it is pending and I don't know what I can, can't say about it. I'm not a lawyer. I do know, I personally have never broken sunshine law and I never intend to. And I'm not going to talk about who did what because I don't fully know and it is pending and so that's really all I can say about it. I apologize.
Thank you. Mr. Brown.
Actually, the whole thing kind of embarrasses me, the way it all was handled, but that, it gives past sins and I can't, I can't waste my life on past sins. The sunshine law was not broke and that's all I can say.
All right. Ms. Porter.
When it was decided to not look at those invoices, it was before I was on the school board. So I, I wasn't there for that vote, but there was a vote that was decided that we're, we're not going to let anybody look at those invoices. I think at the time, that there probably could have been a compromise, that there probably could have been, can we redact things, can we look things at a different, in a different way? Can we have invoices submitted a different way so that we can maybe avoid some of those conflicts that we might have? I don't think that there was ever a compromise, probably ever even attempted. I don't think that anybody on the board broke the sunshine law. I, I wouldn't accuse anybody on this board of that because I don't think that took place. There was, in fact, an appeal made though, and now the question that I think every board member here that's currently on the board should be asking is, how did that happen?
All right. Ms. Dean.
And we're not lawyers. I'm not fully aware of all aspects of it, but I would hope that I could trust my administrators at the top and the people who are in charge of seeing these bills, that they are accurate and justified and that those of us on the board would trust that they know what they're doing. Because I mean, it is the board that hires these people and they're supposed to be skilled in those areas. And I would hope that, you know, we could trust the people above in, in administration that, that they know what they're doing and that the bills are accurate and that they should be paid. But we should definitely be able to see that they are, have been looked at ahead of times, that they are justified and that they are correct before a board is going to vote on it.
All right. Thank you. Going to kind of follow up that question. We'll begin this one with Mr. Brooks. What would you do as a board member to ensure that the board is abiding by the law and ensuring transparency in its relationship with the public? What would you do?
I've, I've not seen any evidence that the board's not following the law. I think that we have our solicitors there, we have a, a full board to keep an eye on each other. We need more communication, more public hearings. As far as transparency goes, I think that, that what we need is more people involved here. I truly appreciate the, the 29 people who came here to watch tonight, but there should be about, you know, 10 times that amount here. What happens at the school board affects the community at every single level. And I would work to get everybody at the meetings. There's no reason why our school board meetings don't have more people at them. And that's the fault of the community and that's the fault of, of the school board. The school board needs to proactively get more people at the meetings. We also need our board members out at the schools. Now, we, we can't just, you can't govern by not being in the school. It, it's easier to make a cut on something if you don't know what's going on in the school. You need to be at the school and, and every one of these major events, we need to have a school board member there to see these kids so that they know that we're invested in them and we know who they are. So, it's mutual accountability would be, I guess, after all of that, is what I'm trying to say, is we all need to hold each other accountable enough by getting everyone involved.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Porter.
Can I ask you to please repeat the question?
Sure. What would you do as a school board member to ensure that the board's abiding by the law and ensuring transparency in its relationship with the public?
Okay. Well, I'm, I would be one of nine. And so, the best answer that I can give is that, just staying involved and it would just be the best of my own personal ability here, because there, if there are meetings going on that I'm not aware of or decisions being made where it's, you know, two or three people, and I'm just giving examples, I probably won't know what's going on. So, just staying involved and holding each other accountable is really the only answer that I have. Because you can't force somebody to give you information if they don't want to. Not that I'm saying anybody has, I'm just saying on my own personal accountability.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Dean.
I think the community needs to get involved. The only time we have people come to board meetings is when we're talking budget. Very seldom do we have more than one or two people at a monthly meeting. And then, they're there on Thursday when we're simply voting on what we discussed on Monday. They need to come, they need to be involved. You're the taxpayers. You need to be there on Monday. We need to listen to you. We all have phones, everybody can get ahold of us when they have something to complain about. So they need to call and talk and get involved. It's your tax dollars, it's your student. We're elected by you, so you need to talk to us. And that's not going to happen if you don't take a proactive approach. I can tell you from the four years I've been on the board, to my knowledge, we have never broken a sunshine law or any law in Pennsylvania. As far as, lost my train of thought.
It happens.
Just a moment. Lost it completely, I'm sorry. Or somewhere.
Mr. Julie.
Yeah, I would just follow up and agree that in order for us to be perceived as, as being honest and above board, people have to see that. And if they're not coming to the meetings and if they're not watching it on TV, they're hearing things from their neighbor or their friend or their aunt, and they may not be true. So, for the people to actually know that we're above board, they need, they need to be accessible, they need to come to the meetings. Having said that, we also need to be accessible. If I'm successful, my phone number will be out there, my email will be out there, I'll be checking it constantly, I'll speak to anyone about anything whenever they want. And that's another way of being transparent, is to just be available to the public whenever they need a question answered, whenever they need something clarified, I would definitely be there. And I would also say, the board does get audited. I believe it's three times a year, I could be wrong on that, but the board does get audited. So there are outside auditors checking also to make sure that, that everything is copacetic above board and, and that everybody's being honest and truthful.
Thank you. Mr. Gerald.
Okay. As far as following the law, I'll repeat what I said, I'm not a lawyer. We have to trust the lawyer that we have at the meetings to, to make sure that we're not doing anything that, that is against the law. And as far as transparency, we need to be out in the community, in the schools, and people need to, to ask us questions. I'm at a lot of stuff and I've heard people, well, they don't want to talk to you because, "Come talk to me, I don't bite, I'm not, I'm not a bad guy. Come, I mean, come talk to me. I, I will answer any question you, you ask me." And like they said, in order for transparency and for people to know what's going on, they have to come to the meeting sometimes too. Because if we talk about something at a meeting on Monday and you weren't there or you don't know about it, just because I don't come up and tell you exactly what happened on Monday doesn't mean I'm not being transparent, okay? You have to, the community has to make an effort, but we also have to make an effort and we have to be accessible and, and visible for the, the public to, to talk to us.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Brown.
Again, I hope we get to some other questions about education. Transparency is not a problem. This board, since I've been on, which has only been a short time, but we have not broke any laws unless our solicitor is lying to us. That's why we have a lawyer there. And Mark's right, transparency works both ways, but I've said this a dozen times, people don't attend Monday meetings, they can't come and speak at a Thursday meeting talking about what they don't know. And that happens. If you come to all the meetings, you will be well informed. If you don't come to the meetings, you're not well informed. It's all hearsay at that point. That's not helping our image. It's not helping Penn Crest's image. So the community has to be involved, they have to be involved 100% and they have to support us, but in turn, we have to support the community. I'll just stop with a red card.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Porter.
I mean, everybody up here has pretty much said the same thing. It really does start with community involvement. I mean, there needs to be more people coming to the meetings, there needs to be, I mean, there's some times where it looks like a ghost town in there. I would like to see us go to more of a format where the work session slash meeting is the same meeting. So that the public can, because in the work sessions, there's questions being asked, all the different directors are bringing their thing up and then we're asking questions and they're answering things. And it's tough with people that were working in sports and kids, it's hard for them to get to that Monday meeting and that Thursday meeting both. I would like to maybe go to more of a format where those questions and answers are happening at the Thursday meeting so that the public can see what's, because they pick one of these up at the front of the meeting and that doesn't relate to them a whole lot. And if they're not able to get to that, that Monday meeting, they really don't know what's going on and it's tough. If we went more to a format where it's questions and answers during the meeting, I know it might make the meeting a little longer on Thursdays, but I think the public would be more, but the public has to come out. They need to get more involved.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Dean.
Well, speaking toward the transparency aspect, if I want to come speak to the board as a taxpayer in Penn Crest, I have to call in and get on the agenda and give them my topic. But if I don't know what they're going to be discussing in public, how can I ask legitimate questions spontaneously because I have to do all this other process to get there? That's one thing I, I don't like, although I understand why they do it, so it can't just become, you know, slugfest. But I, I would like to see the ability to actually more, have more communication with the public if they do come in, which they need to. And, and the board does need to be a team. Having coached 41 years, the, the team is only as good as the weakest link. And if the board doesn't work together, it's not going to function well. So the board does need to work together to accomplish some goals and to have that long-range plan of what's coming up down the road and have someone that has some insight as to what probably is coming up down the road so that we are properly informed.
Mr. Johnston.
I too am disappointed at the, the lack of crowd here and I bet if I asked, and I'm not going to, the vast majority of the people sitting in the audience, I'm guessing are probably teachers.
Taxpayers.
They're taxpayers, but the, the ones that should be here are not here. And so that's disappointing to me. And so that's disappointing to me. The board is supposed to be a team, much like a football team, hockey team, or whatever. They're all part of that team. They all got to go in the same direction. We got to pull together as a team, lock arms as a team. You got to, can't be having little secret meetings outside the meetings and that. Everything's got to be above board and transparent to the public. And I think that's the direction that we need to try and move to, to work more together as a team.
Thank you.
Okay, next question will go to Mrs. Porter. In July, the current Pencrest School Board defeated a motion to extend the current superintendent's contract beyond July 2018 to July 2019. It means Pencrest might have to elect a new superintendent or search for a new superintendent next year. If elected to the board, would you be willing to revisit the issue?
My answer's going to be fairly quick. And I think that the best answer that I can give you is, we would have to find out at that time who... The board would have to meet together and discuss that. Because it's really a team decision, I believe. And so I can't answer for what has already been done. I was not on that board, I was not part of that decision. But I do believe that if that's something that we discuss, we decide together that we need to revisit, then I would be willing to have a discussion. And that's the long and the short of it.
Mrs. Dean?
The board voted. The board made very clear that his contract would not be extended past June of this year. The board spoke.
Mr. Gillick?
Could I ask you to repeat that, please?
Sure. In July, the school board defeated a motion to extend the superintendent's contract by a year. If you're elected to the board, would you be willing to revisit the issue?
I don't believe I would. I would have to respect the opinion of the board as it voted. Moving forward, I will say I have no problem with the job Mr. Healy's doing. But again, I'd respect the board, respect their decision. And I would not choose to revisit that unless the majority of the board wanted to. And of course, in a democracy, I would certainly do that.
Thank you. Mr. Drew?
Quickest answer of the night, no. You said, "Would I be willing to?" Or would...
Would you be willing to revisit the issue?
I guess, I personally don't think it needs revisited. But if the majority of the board wanted to revisit it, then yeah, we would have to revisit it. But I personally, I'm not interested in revisiting that decision.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Brown?
No. Like, unless the majority of the board wanted to, but it would not be brought up by me. We have voted, there are reasons for the way we voted, and we need to move forward.
Okay. Mr. Porter?
Could you repeat it one more time so I make sure that...
Sure, absolutely. In July, the school board defeated a motion to extend the superintendent's contract by a year. If elected to the board, would you be willing to revisit the issue?
I personally would be. I'm not sure that we, where we need to be. So I personally would revisit it myself, yes.
Okay. Mr. Dean?
I was not privy to the decision-making process as far as what reasons they had for not extending it. He is under contract until the end of this year. And I would hope that he would continue to do the best job he's able to do. Would it be revisited? Part of that answer would have to be what he wants it to be. And if he wanted it to be and the board felt that there was legitimate reasons why they should, then I wouldn't be opposed to that. But I can't completely answer that one because I wasn't part of the decision-making process as to why they felt that he would complete his contract and not be extended.
Okay, thanks. Mr. Johnson?
I wasn't part of the board. And I would have to say I would respect the board's decision. They evidently had some reason for not renewing that contract. I don't, I can't really say at this point whether I'd be willing to revisit that or not. I would honor the board's decision thus far.
Mr. Brooks?
As in anything, I think all options are on the table. When we get to that point, we'd have to see what other candidates are out there. And if there's a better option, I would certainly, if not revisit, to extend his contract and look for him to reapply and put him in the pool of candidates. I know that a good board attracts good superintendents. And a poor, dysfunctioning board that's in the newspaper all the time bickering attracts poor candidates.
All right, thank you.
Pencrest is a rather large district and area. You've got three different attendance areas, three different high schools and all the associated elementary, middle schools associated with that. You've got the areas of Cambridge Springs, Segartown, and Maplewood. Would you consider a consolidation of those three schools into maybe two attendance areas or even one in the future? And why or why not? Ms. Dean, we'll start with you.
Okay, I don't have a crystal ball, okay? Pencrest School District is four hundred and five square miles. I think logistically to consolidate into one school is absurd. We would have kids on buses for hours. And little children do not deserve, do not, no child deserves to be on a bus for more than, in my opinion, thirty minutes. But the children in Maplewood are on the bus for almost an hour. Second of all, I don't see how consolidating when we currently still have classes that are graduating ninety students, depending on what year we are in the flux of the numbers, that is something that we need to consider. I think we need the feasibility study to see what our buildings, the condition of our buildings are in. That needs to be done. If our numbers continue to drop, then I would think we would have to look at it. But anytime in my dear future, I would say probably not.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Gillick?
I certainly would not be in favor of it. That would be an absolute last resort. I totally agree with her, the transportation would be a nightmare for the kids and everyone involved. My wife is from the Conia Valley attendance area. And just from speaking to people and being out there, I have seen the decline of community pride, not having their own school anymore. It would not be something that I would want to do to any of our attendance areas. Again, as a last resort, if it was absolutely, positively necessary, would I do it? I think I would probably have to. But certainly no plan to do so at any time soon.
Thank you. Gerald?
We're not there where we even need to really talk about that. And I honestly believe if we, the board, the communities, the teachers, the kids are willing to roll up our sleeves and do what we need to do to bring people back here, it will never be an option. It will never need to be seriously addressed. But at this point, we're not there and I don't think we're going to be there for the foreseeable future. If we have, like I said, a plan and we can look at kind of the future, we don't have a crystal ball, but if we roll up our sleeves and do the hard work that we need to do, it's never going to be an option. There you go.
That is not an option for me. I would rather look to the future in a positive light. I think with the things that we've been talking about recently and the ideas that hopefully will keep flowing into the board meetings and we can find ways to improve our district. As Mark said, we're not even close to being to consolidation mode. And I'm planning on fighting like hell to make sure we never are. That's just not an option with me.
All right, thank you. Mr. Porter?
I believe we're the third-largest transportation district in the state. And that creates a real funding problem for Pencrest. It's one of our dilemmas that we have. Governor Wolf this year, in his budget, you know, he upped the education funding and he upped the special education funding, but he lowered the transportation funding. So to a district like Pencrest, that's about a hundred thousand dollars less money that we got this year, even though he's going to tell everybody that he upped the funding, not for a district like Pencrest, it's not. I absolutely am not at all wanting to combine any of these schools. I would never want to do that. Obviously, at some point in time, we would have to. We really just need to look at getting our numbers. We've lost about eight hundred students in the last ten or fifteen years. It's projected, there's numbers out there that you can see that we're probably going to lose that many more again. I mean, that's what's projected possibly. We need to do what we have to do to make sure that that doesn't happen and keep our numbers up so we don't know. Nobody wants, there's nobody on this board, there's nobody in this audience that wants to see these three schools closed. I mean, we have to do what we have to do to make sure that doesn't happen. I would never want to do that.
Thank you. Mr. Dean?
I would not be in favor of consolidation. We have enough trouble getting parents here for our meetings, for board meetings and stuff. If you eliminate the community aspect of their schools, it's going to be worse. And I believe that Conia School District had three high schools. And those same three buildings are still open with students in it, with kids being transported back and forth and changing routes. And I don't see where they've really saved much. I would hope that they may have a greater ability to offer more advanced classes because they have some number consolidation. But I, that would be the only positive I would see out of what they did. I just don't see that as being a feasible thing in our area because we are such a huge area and transportation costs are crazy.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson?
I don't personally think anybody's in favor of consolidation. But I think it's down the road possibly going to have to be at least looked at. We can't keep going the way that we're going. We're not keeping these buildings up like they're supposed to. I've been in this gym when they had a sporting event and they had to shut it down because of a rainstorm. The water's coming in. And when we're losing our revenue, how are we going to keep these buildings up? And when we're losing our students, we're losing revenue. I don't think anybody's in favor of it, but I think there may come a time where we may have to visit that.
Thank you. Mr. Brooks?
I'm agree with what Jerry said about doing a feasibility study. If we're going to make any decisions, we have to make them from a point of knowing what we're talking about versus guessing what we're talking about. I'm not sure how much money that cash saved when they consolidated. I'm not sure that, you know, that money is a major motivating factor for that. I agree with, like, you know, what others said about, you know, we need to work towards what we want. As a community, we need to decide what we want. I personally am, would like to see three schools, you know? We've got, you wish you were a Segartown Panther. We've got, you know, Blue Devil Pride. We've got the Eye of the Tiger. And, you know, we want to stay independent. If we consolidate, it would devastate at least one community. You'd see your property values drop. You'd see people leaving faster than what they're leaving now. And we can't make decisions based on what we hope would happen or think would happen. We need to actually know what would happen, do the best study so we can deal with the facts, making a decision like that.
Thank you. Ms. Porter?
I personally am against it. I think we can find better solutions to a budget problem or to our financial issues than combining. That's it. I would definitely be far against it.
Thank you.
Okay. Next question will go to Mr. Gillick. Start off with you. If elected, what is your number one issue that you'd like to see accomplished by the board?
My number one issue, honestly, if I were elected to the board, would be cooperation. I kind of feel like I'm repeating myself, but the board is not cooperating right now. I know taxes are an issue. I know there are a lot of different issues in the district, litigation and so forth. I think that would all work itself out. If you had a board that worked together as a team toward a common goal. So again, I think if we had a board that was actually on the same page, I think some of the other issues would take care of themselves and I think we could move forward.
Okay. Porter?
The biggest issue? I feel like I'm beating a dead horse and repeating myself. But I think our biggest issue right now is enrollment and the lack of direction that goes with that. We need to find a direction. We need to stay in, on that path to bring people back. If we increase enrollment, I mean, money follows kids. So if you increase the enrollment, you increase your revenue. And a lot of the financial problems take care of themselves. We do have to work together, but that is part of the plan, the vision that we have as a district, to market ourselves, market our area. We need to work, I've said it countless times, we need to work with the teachers, the community, the business leaders, business people, retired people. We need to work with everyone to come up with a real plan that will get us where we want to go. And if we come up with that plan, consolidation, finance, none of that stuff will matter because we will get where we want to be, not where other people have put us.
Thank you. Mr. Brown?
Repeat the question, please.
Sure. If elected, what is your number one issue?
Back to beating a dead horse. Opening up lines of communication between the board, the staff, the community has to be one of the top priorities. And doing that, that will bring more ideas. That will bring a broader way of thinking, allowing the board to work with everybody to move forward. Like I said earlier with the last question, consolidation isn't an option. We have to find ways to continually move forward. We get, move forward, have higher education. We have to be above standards. Standard is not an option. We have to be above standards. And we have to have people want to bring their kids back to Pencrest School District because of our class sizes and because of what we offer the students. If we do that, as Mark said, everything else will start working its way out. But everything we do takes time for it to happen. But communication, transparency, working, open lines of communication has to be one of our top priorities.
Mr. Porter?
I believe it all starts with leadership. The board has to, whatever this new nine-member board is, has to get along and they have to communicate. The fighting and the bickering and whatever has to stop. The drama has to quit. I'm pretty sure that Reedville Tribune's running out of ink with all the articles they're putting in the paper about Pencrest School District. And that has to come to an end because the community doesn't like it. And it chases the community away. Our leadership, I think, is where we need to improve. And that all starts with the board, that we need to find good administrators and bring good people in here, that that can all trickle down. And if we have good people at the top, good ideas and good plans and good things will happen. But right now, we can't attract, it's hard to attract people to this district in those positions. Like, if we need to replace somebody, it's hard to get anybody to come in here because you kind of have a bad rap rate. And I can't imagine if we lose our superintendent, what we're going to attract for a new one. I mean, it's, it has to start at the top and it has to start with our leadership.
Okay. Mr. Dean?
I think one of the most important things is that we are providing the best quality education with the most opportunities for students to be exposed to things that are going to happen to them and their futures. And that does start with a board that works together, that is, has the same target and same plan in mind. And if, that would be the only way to get to that point of having the best education possible for these kids that are coming up through. Because I've got two granddaughters and a grandson on the way and I want to make sure that they have every opportunity to be exposed to as much as possible so they have some idea where they want to go with their future.
Thank you.
Mr. Johnson, what would be your top priority if elected?
I guess my top priority... I guess my top priority would be teamwork. Team stands for together, everybody achieves more. And if we're unified, communicating with one another, have a common target. Mr. Dean just hit the one common target. The target should be the best possible education for the kids that we can provide, and we've got to continually strive to do better. And I think as we do that, that's going to draw the kids back to our community.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Brooks?
The Tribune asked this in a candidate preview and said to do this in a hundred words. And of all the things that I've done as a candidate, that's been the hardest thing, was to try to reduce something to a hundred words. The number one issue that I see is we just have to improve our education. We have to improve what we're providing for our students. To do that, it's going to take a lot of different things. It is going to be the board working together. We have to have a common goal that is focused on improving education. We've got to get rid of the bickering back and forth. We've got to get rid of the misinformation. It's not teachers versus taxpayers. The one question you asked before was, you know, balancing students versus taxpayers. Students are going to become taxpayers, you know. Teachers are teaching them, you know. This is all pieces together in a puzzle and we can't be blaming one or another, you know. We've got to tell, we've got to tell the hard truths instead of the things that are easy to hear so that we can all work forward from a fact-based stance going forward and improve the education. And that's really what we need to work on.
Ms. Porter?
As I'm sitting up here and thinking about what do I want to say next, I can't help it, and I think this is the mom in me, our future generation, our children, are what's the most important. And when I think about all of these topics that we're talking about, to assign each child a dollar sign is kind of really bothering me. And I think the only way to resolve these, all of these issues that affect all of that is we have to work together as a team. I'm not looking at these children that flood these schools as a dollar sign or, you know, tax money coming in. They're kids. They're generations. They're people. They're future adults. What are we giving them? What are we taking away? We're going to take away their music? We're going to take away sports? We're going to make decisions that really affect the passion and who they are? Or are we going to sit down and stop bickering and arguing and just talk about how can we fix these problems?
Ms. Dean?
Teamwork has to be number one because if we have a team that works together, you get a lot more accomplished. And that's what we need to do. Our students are the reason that I ran for the board four years ago. I told the kids when I retired from teaching that I would run for the board. I never promised them I'd get elected, but I did promise them that I would run because I wanted to continue helping students. That's my main agenda. That's the only agenda I've ever had. I love kids. I was in education for thirty-eight years. We need the team. We need the teamwork. We need a strategic plan. We need to have goals. And we need the community to be part of that team so that we benefit is for the students.
Okay. Thank you. Next question, Mr. Jerome. There's been a lot of talk about teamwork. What specifically can you do as a board member to extend an olive branch, to build back up the teamwork and get everyone on the same page, working together as a cohesive unit, maybe?
Man, I don't fight with anybody. I don't. These guys can tell.
This is true.
I'm as easygoing and mellow as they come.
And maybe a mellow person can help bring everyone together. What could you do to bring the whole board together?
I think probably just facilitate conversation. And honestly, tell people to sit down and shut up when they need to be told to sit down and shut up. I mean, that's really what it comes down to. That's where the bickering is and, you know, everybody wants their point heard, which I understand. Okay, I want my point heard, but you have to stop and listen to the other person's point also. And that's really what we need to do and that's, maybe that's what I can do, is help facilitate that and kind of keep people, to use a teaching term, keep people on task and, you know, make them, help them to understand that, you know, we are supposed to be working together. Your idea is not any better than her idea, but, you know, everybody's ideas need to be heard. Just because you think somebody has a bad idea, doesn't mean it's a bad idea because they probably think the same thing about yours. I mean, that's how humans work. So, I mean, maybe that's what I can do, kind of help bring people together. I don't know.
Thank you. Mr. Brown?
I like to think I have a few skills, but the one thing I noticed in the last few meetings that we've all been throwing ideas around, the last two meetings, actually, we've been throwing a lot of ideas around. It's really been nice because I personally have been writing ideas down and then I like to research stuff. I like to ask questions. I talk to other teachers or other people involved and I try to get those answers or other ideas to help me come up with an answer. But then when we meet again, we have more discussion and then Mark tells me to sit down and shut up sometimes, but it works out. But we each have our own skill set we bring. I like to research and, but I also, I do try to listen to other ideas. Sometimes I'm a little stubborn, that's true. But I see progress. We are making progress. And sometimes these questions bother me, but there are things that are getting better. It takes time. But teamwork is what we're just going to have to strive for. Teamwork.
Okay. Ms. Porter? Obviously, when you're on a board of nine members, there's nine different personalities. I mean, and you have nine different people up here with different ideas and different, you know, Mark is the nicest guy on the board, I'm pretty sure. Sometimes I'm like, would you say something? It's really just communication. It's just, everybody has to communicate. I mean, and that, we should all be doing that. That should all be our, that should all be our branch that we should be handing out there is we all need to talk to each other and communicate. We need to communicate with administration more. We need to communicate with, communication. This board does not communicate and we need to fix that. That's really all there is to it.
Okay. Mr. Dean?
I don't have any hidden agendas. My only agenda is the educational opportunity of kids. And I'm always open-minded and willing to listen to other people and their opinions and as long as they can give me reasons why and facts behind why they think this would be a good thing to do, I'm willing to listen. I'm not real controversial either. He wasn't controversial in my classes and neither was he when I had him in school. That's how long I've been around. And all the other teachers out here that might have been my students at one time, I'm not hard to get along with. I have basic things that I think are right and wrong and I have no problem saying that I think it's right or wrong.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Johnson, if elected, what can you do to extend an olive branch to encourage more teamwork?
Again, it comes back to the communication thing. We all have ideas and sometimes his set of eyes might see something wrong with my idea or vice versa. But with the communication, we can work that, through that I can say, you know, he can tell me, hey, you know, that's not the direction that we need to go. And I think that's the problem we have right now. There's no communication with this board. I think there's, for lack of a better word, cliques in this board. They're not working together as a team. And I think that's got to be a common goal, is total teamwork.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Brooks?
I agree with everything everyone said. We've got to communicate. We've got to keep each other accountable, make sure that we're all dealing with the same set of facts, the same numbers. We've got to keep each other focused on what the goal is. There's not one person that's, you know, there's, even though we have a board president, we have a board. You know, it's everybody, it's, you know, the five, the five fingers, well, the nine fingers on one hand. That's a horrible analogy. All right, so moving past that. I'll use a quick example. There was a gentleman that spoke at the last meeting, the last board meeting, and he had, was not a fan of mine. And I, to be fair, had not been a fan of his. And we had a really good discussion over social media. And at the end of it, you know, he's like, I appreciate you taking the time, but listen to what I have to say, listen to what I was trying to say and valuing my opinion. And that would be something that I would, that's a lesson that I would take with me going forward, that I don't necessarily always have to prove everyone that I'm right, that we can all work together and see what we're trying to do together.
Thank you. Ms. Porter?
I think no matter where you are, whether you're at home, whether you're at work, whether you're on a school board or whatever it might be, you need to, not you, we need to listen more than we talk. We have two ears and one mouth for a reason. And I think we need to listen better.
Okay. Ms. Dean?
I think we need to respect each other. We need to respect each other's opinion. You may not agree with that opinion, but you need to give them the courtesy of respecting their opinion. Communication is key and if you don't respect someone, you don't usually listen to them. So we do need to have the respect there and then we need to listen.
Thank you.
Hey, the disadvantage of being last is that Stacy stole my two ears and one mouth. But seriously, that's what I used to tell the kids in elementary school, you have two ears and one mouth, listen more. And that's what I will do. I think it's important to actively listen to people's opinions. Even if you don't agree with it, you can find some morsel of something that you can make them feel good about and then move on and discuss the things that you disagree on. Compromise is the whole key. You can't always get what you want, compromise. I think it was the Rolling Stones that sang that. I heard that, I'm cool. But you can't always get what you want. You have to know that. And I do know that. And again, actively listening is the key to any conversation, any compromise moving forward in any way.
Thank you. All right. Well, going to start this round with a question from Mr. Brown. What's your position on standardized school testing and why?
Wow. That's a good one. Standardized school testing. I got to be nice. My wife told me to be nice. Standardized school testing. I think the education system should be run by the communities, the local communities, not the state or federal government. I think we spend too much time testing and not enough time teaching. And I think that's across the board. That's not Pencrest, that's public school system. But that doesn't help our case in any way, as far as I'm concerned. I don't have the knowledge I wish I did in that, other than what I've heard, but I have to say that's why one of the things I keep saying is whatever the standards are, I think we need to strive to be above that. Really, already?
Waited since the beginning.
Well, all right.
I still have twenty seconds.
Yeah. It's going to take longer than that.
Ms. Porter?
I'm not really for standardized anything. Public education has, over the last twenty, thirty years, obviously changed on what we, when I went to school, we took the Iowa test. And you took that Iowa test and at the end of that test, in the next year, you got the test results and everybody knew where you were at. Everybody knew, okay, he needs improvement in this, he needs work in there and that. The problem with education now is it's a cookie cutter society. We try to pretend that every kid's the same and they're not. They're not all the same. We need to individualize our education more instead of we, I don't think we, just like Tim said, spend too much time taking tests. We also spend too much time preparing to take the test. Where we should be educating our kids. That's what we should be spending our time on educating, not spending our time on how to take a test. Here again, that's something that this school board doesn't have a lot of control over, but we have some, I suppose. It's more of a state thing, federal thing, whatever, I mean, but it's too much of a cookie cutter society. Kids, they're all different. They're all different.
Ms. Dean?
As long as the state and federal government says you have to do these certain tests to prove that the teachers are doing a good job and that students are learning and progressing, as long as that, they say we have to do it, then it has to be done. It's, until that aspect changes, when as long as they are tying money into their test results, then teachers are stuck having to teach to a test sometimes and not just to a goal. But until that changes where money's not tied to test results, it's going to be as it is. We're going to have to do standardized testing to show progress so we can tell parents, tell parents what's going on with their children. They are not progressing or they are progressing. They need help in this area, they're doing very well in that area. There are positives to taking those tests.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Johnson?
I disagree with the standardized testing and I think we made a big mistake when we let our federal and state government get into our education system. I would rather see it on a gift basis. Everybody has different gifts. And the teachers working with them kids would be able to find out what that child's gift is and focus on that and focus the education towards that. Like I said, it's not a cookie cutter society. We're trying to push everybody into a mold and make everybody the same and we're not. This room has got forty, fifty people and probably every one of us is different in some form or fashion. And I would rather see us focus on the gifts of that student and educate them towards that gift.
Thank you. Brooks?
We need to have standards and you need to have a way to measure those standards. We have some teachers that do exceptional teaching, you know, using these standards. I think, I agree with what people are saying, that everybody's not the same, you know, even within our own family. I have three children, each one of them have very different gifts and each one of them have very different weaknesses. The secret, in addition to teaching to those tests and making sure that we meet the requirements that we're required to meet, to make sure that we get the money that we need and excel in those areas, we also need to make sure that in the other areas outside of that, that we have enough resources that we can have the children grow in the other areas that they excel at, to make sure that we're offering enough opportunities for them outside of where we test. There's a lot of things that we don't test that we can improve on, that we can do better by our kids in those ways. Don't be defined by the test, but we need the standards, we need the tests. And whether that's developed by the community, the state, the federal government, is really irrelevant because there's going to be standards and there's going to be tests. To me, the big thing is what we do outside of those tests. And look at the teachers that do well at these things, that make these kids excel in other areas and use those as teaching moments for the rest of the district.
Thank you very much. Ms. Porter?
Because of the way, because of the way that we have to do them, there's not really any power, we don't have any power as a board to change that at the moment. I don't agree with them. I agree with what everybody's been saying so far, that we're not all cookie cutter. I do understand why they exist. I understand that, that we do need to be held, teachers, whatever, education system needs to be held at a standard to make sure that we are teaching these kids because there's public money involved. So I understand why they exist, but I don't necessarily like them. I know our kids get stressed out over them, but we're not all the same.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Dean?
We need standardized testing, but I think we have too much of it. Too many students do not do well with standardized testing. I think that the teachers have a better handle on what the students are learning, especially in the primary grades, in the elementary schools, in the high schools. We do, we are mandated to give the tests, but I really think a lot of kids, if you, if you go to the Crawford County, I call VOTAC, they're all screaming at me for calling a VOTAC, Career Technical Center, and you watch those children show you what they have learned and they get to use their hands. It's a different way of judging how they do, evaluating how they do. It's not pencil and paper and pencil. And a lot of students don't do well with paper and pencil and that's what we are required to test. So I would like to see other avenues adopted by the state and the federal government for all children to be successful.
Thank you very much. Cool.
I think the words I'm thinking of right now are necessary evil. You know, there has to be some accountability for the teachers and the students. They have to be able to prove that they learned what you tried to teach them. So there has to be some measure of that. And standardized tests, right now, are the way to go. Do I like them? No. Do I think they could be much less intense than they are? Yeah, especially for the little kids, especially for the elementary students. You know, they sit there for three or four days. sit there for three or four days doing these tests, and unless you're exceptional, unless they're exceptional, you know, by the last test or the last couple segments of the test, you know, they're beat, they're whipped, they're done. I think it should be less intense, I know the state has pared it down slightly this year, which still doesn't, it doesn't take less time to prepare them for the test, it's just gonna be maybe one last day of testing, which is a good start, and I'd like to see them continue to move in that direction and consolidate the test and make it less intense.
Okay, thank you very much. Gerald?
All right, well, I'm not, I'm not in favor of standardized testing, and to echo what some of the people have said, the state and federal governments have tied it to funding, so we don't have a choice, we have to do it. I think we spend a lot of time preparing them for what's on the test, and shortchange them in other areas that they could benefit, and they, they would enjoy more, maybe to use a couple of the guys down there, you know, something that they're gifted in, you know, if they love music, they love art, they love drama, not drama, you know, drama class, you know, if, if they love that type of stuff, but their entire education is focused on preparing for the standardized test, they get shortchanged on what they really, really enjoy, and I don't think that's right, but like Mr. Dean said, we don't, we don't have a choice, it's tied to funding, and until they change that, we, we're stuck with what we have to do, so.
Thank you very much. We're at that point in the evening where we're gonna conclude the questioning, and we're gonna give each candidate up to two minutes to make a closing statement. We started out going one to nine, we're gonna go nine to one on the closing, so, Ms. Gerald, you're up first as far as a closing statement, and again, we have up to two minutes.
All right, okay, this is, this is big, because these guys will tell you, I don't like to hear myself talk that much, okay, so to go back to back for like almost four minutes. I just wanna thank the Tribune for hosting and having the event, Segur Town High School for hosting, everybody for coming, I think, I hope, I kinda made it clear what I think we need to do as a district, where we need to go, where we need to focus, people need to get out and vote, and they need to attend the board meetings, for real transparency to happen, you need to be there, you need to, to participate. Somebody down there said at one point, you know, the way we, we have it structured, that you have to sign up beforehand and, and everything. I, I wouldn't be opposed to having a 15 to 20 minute open, open question and answer type thing, so that if you have a question about something that was discussed, you could, you can bring it up, you don't have to sign up, but if you wanna talk for three or four minutes or whatever, you do have to sign up on a specific topic, but I, I would, I would like to see something like a 15 to 20 minute question and answer, that's, that's down the road. But anyway, I just thanks everybody for coming, and get out and vote.
Thank you very much. Mr. Cool?
Again, I'd like to thank the Tribune, Armstrong, and my favorite radio station, Cool, I'm a plug.
They don't vote.
They don't vote? They might. I just want everybody to know that I am in this for the right reason, I am in it for the kids, for the students, to help Penn Crest get back to where it was. There's some talk out there that you should never vote for a retired teacher, because they're just in it for the teachers. Well, I shouldn't have to say that I'm not, but I'm not, and everybody that knows me knows that. The kids are the number one priority, I respect the teachers' opinions a lot, they're down in the trenches, and hopefully they're gonna, they're gonna help with suggestions, as well as the administrators, superintendent, rest of my fellow board members, if I'm fortunate enough to get on, but that's my priority, is, is the kids and the District of Penn Crest to, to get it back to where it was. Finally, thank everybody for coming, if there are any questions that weren't asked, or any questions that you have for, I'll speak for everybody, anybody, catch us after the meeting, or after the forum, and I'm glad to talk to you again, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you to everybody, thanks to the TV audience, thanks to the audience that is here. I ran four years ago for the board, students were my number one priority, that has not changed, kids are still my priority, and in educating teacher, in educating students that inquire, that requires teachers, and we have good teachers in Penn Crest, we have great teachers in Penn Crest, our kids do amazing things, we need to get that out in the public, and we need to do a better job of promoting our kids and what is going on in Penn Crest across the board, K through 12. We do a little bit of it, we don't sell ourselves well, and we need to, but the kids are my number one priority, they always have been, otherwise I wouldn't have been an educator for 38 years. I would love to be elected again, to be on the board, I still think I have a lot to offer, a lot of insight, having been on the business side of it, as well as being in the trenches and being on the board for four years, so thank you all very much, get out and vote next week, in two weeks, two weeks.
Thank you very much. Ms. Porter?
I first wanna say thank you for, for hosting this, and for your wonderful questions. The children are my most important priority, and that's why I chose to run, and not for any other reason, because I care very deeply about the children in our community, I refer to them as future adults, and that's exactly how I see them, whether they're seniors in high school or kindergartners, and so if you so elect me, I promise that I will be a teammate to my fellow board members. I'm not looking to, I have no other agenda other than the children in my community, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Brooks?
Thank you to everybody, thank you to, everyone's made a nice list of all the people to thank, so I thank all of you again. I, I think the themes that we've covered here are, you know, communication, transportation, students, not, or transparency, students, a little bit on transportation, and I, I think that, that that's the right direction we need to be going. With, with many of those things, it's a two-way street, communication, doesn't matter how well I speak, if, if you're not willing to listen, it doesn't matter, transparency, you can make a window as clear as you want, if no one wants to look through it, then it doesn't matter. So we need people here at these meetings. I appreciate the taxpayers that are here, I appreciate everyone that decided that on a Wednesday night they wanted to come here and listen to the nine of us speak, and thank you, thank you again for giving us the opportunity to, to speak to the voters, and everybody get out and vote, and bring someone else to vote, and stop at the nursing home and grab somebody, and, and see if they need to go vote. Maybe not grab them, but maybe ask them if they need a ride.
Do it the legal way.
The legal, I'm not saying grab people and drag them, but if you're related to them, you can drag them.
Thank you very much. Mr. Johnston?
I'd like to thank the Tribune, Armstrong, and Cool for hosting this, giving us the opportunity. Again, I'm disappointed in what we have here, we got an election coming up, and this is where people could come and find out what's going on, hopefully they're gonna pay attention to the three outlets that are taking care of this, but that's, that's a sad statement for our public, going to the voting booth and not knowing what you're voting for. My goal, like I stated all through the evening, is number one, the kids, and again, that has to be our number one focus, number two, I think, has to be the teamwork. We have to put together a team that can move together, lock arms, put that target out there, and work towards that common goal, and do the best that we can with what we've got.
Thank you very much. Mr. Dean?
Well, we have a TV audience, so again, the challenge is, please get out there and vote, and get as many friends and people and acquaintances that you have that are informed by watching this, to know what we stand for, what we are interested in, get out there and vote, it's the only way you can voice yourselves, thank you to all the people that are here, whether you're teachers, or taxpayers, or both. Our goal should be the benefit of the children, and that's, that's why I'm here, I'm not here as a former educator to, to throw money at teachers, I'm not here to throw money at, at anything. I, I didn't go into education to become wealthy, I knew better, I don't know any teacher in 37 years that ever went into education because they thought they were gonna get wealthy, they went in because they wanted what's best for kids, to give them an opportunity to be as successful as they can be, and that's what I wanna do.
All right, thank you. Mr. Porter?
I'd also like to thank everybody for coming out this evening, we need more folks like you to come out, the district has to get people involved. The children are our future, and that's really what this board is here for, they are our future teachers, and our engineers, and our future workers, and, and the people that are gonna live in these communities, so our, everyone that's running for this board, I would assume that their top priority would be those children, and that's, and that is mine. I've coached baseball and basketball for combined 18 years, never once for a dime, because, because I loved those kids, because I loved working with those kids, because I loved seeing a smile on their face when they, when they do well, and they improve each week. So my heart is in nothing but the children, but in saying that, you have to be, as a board member, you're also responsible for the taxpayers' pocketbook, and we have to, we have to make sure that we're checking all the, all the finances, and making sure that everything is being spent properly. There, there may be a time that you need to raise taxes, but nobody wants to do that, and, and we need to be also responsible to the taxpayers, so those are the two things that, obviously, that being a board member, that I would look to, to help out the kids and the taxpayers also, have to be protected.
Thank you very much. Mr. Brown?
And again, thanks to everybody for being here. My, my only priority is the kids, the education is of the utmost priority, these kids are what we're gonna depend on later on in life. Making sure the teachers have what they need to educate our children is a second priority. As, listening to everybody talk tonight, though, I've got some great ideas to go back with, if I get elected, I plan on utilizing these, and working as a team, yes, that is the utmost priority of this board, having common goals, but we have to have open discussions about our goals, and we have to keep visiting our goals to make sure we are focused on achieving our goals. We can't say we're gonna do something in the next month, go a different route, and that, that's just not gonna help, help us or, or the district. And the other thing is open lines of communication, I said the community has to be involved in the school board, the community has to be involved with the education, they have to attend meetings, and Mark brought up a good point, let's have an open session for, on the Monday nights, and I've said in the past, I don't care if our Monday night meetings are four hours long, the Thursday night meetings can be 10 minutes long, I'm okay with that. If that gets people to our meetings, and lets them communicate with us and share ideas, that's what we should be after. Put your card down. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks to all of you, the folks who've been listening on Cool 101.7, this may seem a little redundant, but tonight's forum is gonna be shown on Armstrong Cable on Channel 23 and Channel 100 at 8:00 PM on Friday, October the 27th, and then again on Friday, November the 3rd, also at 8:00 PM. Those will be the first of several repeats of tonight's event. Again, we wanna thank the candidates for being with us tonight, Jerry Dean, Bob Gulick, Mark Gero, Terry Dean, Travis Porter, Robert Johnston, Timothy Brown, Stacy Porter, and Jeffrey Brooks, and for their willingness to appear this evening and take questions from us. We also wanna thank everybody here that was in the audience for joining us, as well as those who have been watching and listening at home, and we also do wanna thank the staff and, at the Segur Town High School staff and administration for preparing everything. We do wanna remind you to get out and vote for the candidates of your choice on November 7th, it's your opportunity to make your voice heard. On behalf of Rick Green and the Meadville Tribune, I'm Keith Gushard, have a good evening.